Minutes for the May 1 regular and closed session, portions of the closed session minutes from April 3 and April 17.
I'd ask that closed session from 3rd and 17th. Um, hold on one second. 3rd and 17th, then hang tight, I may want. Should have written this. And May 1st, I would like all the three closed sessions to still be open and we'll talk about it in closed meeting.
Do I have your motion?
I'd move that the minutes, regular minutes from May 1st with, and be approved and the others be left held open.
Have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 1 regular session. Do I have a second? So, second by Councilmember Whitley. Motion was by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Under Agenda Adjustments, I would like to move item 8D for the next in line and also add a consult with the attorney on the closed session.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldridge. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. This is National Public Works Week and I am asking council to adopt that proclamation. I'm gonna read that proclamation. National Public Works Week Proclamation, May 21st through 27th, 2023. The title is Connecting the World Through Public Works. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Albemarle. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Albemarle to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now, be it now resolved, the city of Albemarle do hereby designate the week May 21st through 27th, 2023 as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with the representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Proclaim this the 15th day of May, 2023.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Puddle of Work Plaiders, if you would come up, we will recognize you if you would come up here and stand as a group. We want to tell you how appreciated you are in what you do. We all know that you're the backbone, our employees are the backbone, and we accomplish what we do because of you. So thank you very much for all you do. Ross, would you like to make a few comments?
Just a few. First and foremost, not only myself, but my staff, we appreciate the agenda adjustment. After seeing the public hearings on here, you know, this is their time to shine. I don't think they want to be here for three hours or more, so anyway.
Four.
But anyway, I was trying to scare them a little bit. But I do, I appreciate the recognition and I do appreciate the staff. I'm very fortunate to be able to work with each and every one of these people. They truly are unsung heroes. We, we are in a diverse department that does a lot of stuff behind the scenes that they don't get credit for, so I encouraged them to come out tonight and this is their time to shine. We, these are the guys that cover up the trash at the landfill, they're on holidays when trash is still being collected while the rest of us are taking off. These are the fleet mechanics that keep our police cars running and our backhoes for water and sewer running and our fire trucks running. Our street maintenance division that keep our rightaways up to date, potholes patched, street maintenance, warehouse and city inventory, and also our downtown crew keeps our downtown very pretty, in my opinion. So they put in a lot of work and do a lot of stuff for the city. So I applaud them and I appreciate y'all's recognition tonight.
Thank you again, Ross.
Y'all can go on now.
And you don't want them to stay with us as long as you want.
That's right, absolutely. And we're on Facebook Live. If you get bored, you can turn it to and back in.
We're getting ready to start several public hearings and I want to make an announcement very first thing. The first three public hearings all have to do with one thing, and that's the Long Lake annexation. I want you to know that there's been a request to continue this public hearing. So what we're gonna do, I'm gonna open the public hearing tonight. I'm gonna allow anyone that wants to speak to speak, but we will take no actions on that public hearing and it will be continued to probably the second meeting in June, June 19th. So I want everybody to know that upfront. If you signed up to speak and you want to speak, I will allow you to speak. If you do not want to speak and want to wait until the 19th and come back, that is your privilege and you can just tell me that when I call your name, either way. Also, I want to announce before we even start, I'm gonna make sure there's no misunderstanding on what's going on here tonight. The Long Creek apartments, buildings, housing that is gonna be built on City Lake Drive has already been approved in the county. So what we're doing tonight is deciding whether it will be built in the city under city rules or whether it will stay in the county and be built under county rules. Now, if you're thinking that we're gonna be able to stop it, we cannot. It's already been approved. It was approved in the county several months ago and the developer has the option to go through with that or he has asked us to consider annexing it and letting it come into the city. The developer, I don't know why his reasoning is behind that, but he is not here tonight, but he will be back on the 19th if you wish to see and talk with him at that time. But I just want everybody to understand, it's gonna go through or it's approved to go through under the county's guidelines now. If the city decides to annex it, we will be able to set our guidelines and can have more control over what buffers and things we have around City Lake. Right now, we can have no control over anything that occurs there because it is in the county. I just want everybody to understand that before we start. Now, I'll open the public hearing ordinance 2313, Consider a Development Agreement for the Long Lake Annexation. Mr. Robinson, would you like to make any comments?
On the first bill.
Okay. The first one I have signed up is Barbara Tousit. 42698 Moonshine Drive, New London.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Will that mic down, please?
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
Is that better?
No.
No.
Try it again.
Better?
Yes.
Okay, I'll speak up too.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak and I will acknowledge I'm not a resident of the city. I live in the county and I do love City Lake Park and that is the genesis of my interest in speaking tonight. And you didn't scare me off with the conversation about the understanding that it has been passed already, but I did distribute a hard copy of what I was gonna say and what I'm going to do is jump to a section rather than doing it all. And what I really want to get across to you is the importance, and if you, if it does come to the city and you have control over how things are developed and the development site plan, there are just several things to consider. So you may not know that City Lake Park is a birding hotspot and the next speaker or one of the next speakers this evening will tell you about that, but that is how I learned about City Lake Park. I took a birding class from the Stanley Community College, college, sorry. And one of our field trips was to City Lake Park and we saw an amazing, I don't know, I think 49 species or something. And it really got people excited. So this is a cool thing to have in your community. When I realized that there might be a development across the lake, first of all aesthetically I thought, oh, how terrible. And then I started thinking about what it would mean to the habitat there. So my background is a master naturalist in Virginia and I am, it's not my career, it was what I did when I retired from technology, but what I've brought to North Carolina is an interest in native plants and habitat and working on that here. I'm on the board of the Native, the North Carolina Native Plant Society and I'm not speaking to you from, you know, with any acknowledgement of their presence in this meeting, I just wanted to let you know who I am. So the interest that I have in the ecology there and the impact on the lake, if it becomes a development that you do, there are several things that I would hope would be in your requests for the developer. And those things would have to do, as you mentioned, with vegetative buffer, an extremely important thing to watch for, especially since that site is on a slope and regardless of the rainwater catching that you do from the gutters and the roofs and the impervious surfaces, you're going to have runoff from the land itself. And that land is very likely to have fertilizers in it. City Lake Park is not the healthiest body of water. You know that it's not in your drinking watershed. And adding to the stress on that, adding to the invasive plants that are actually aquatic in the pond and in the lake and will be further emphasized by the fertilizer will not be a good thing for City Lake Park itself. So I wanted to just talk a little bit about the vegetation that, and the buffer that's there. So in the packet that I delivered, there is a picture, just an aerial satellite photo of the, of the area that will be developed. And there's considerable tree cover there. And there's also quite a lot of mature trees and vegetation on the shoreline. It's really important that when they develop that, that stay intact, that the mature trees are protected from native, from non-native invasive vines that might be pulling them down and that the native vegetation that's there, present in the shoreline remain. It's important for stabilization of the bank, for erosion control, and as a filtration device to keep the pollutants from coming down the hill from the impervious surfaces and the, and the potentially fertilized and pesticide-used lawn. So that's extremely important. And I wanted also to speak about the significance of the trees themselves. So native trees have a lot more purpose in our ecology than just the shade that they provide. They are food for the insects that feed our birds and our other wildlife. And without native trees, we are, well, we're seeing it, we're seeing a loss in habitat, but we're seeing really a precipitous decline in insect life. And so it's very important to maintain those trees and that the trees that are planted by the developer are in true, are in fact truly native to this area and will be successful here. And the one that is suggested on the development site plan, a laurel oak is not one of those. So it makes me suspect that perhaps the landscape capabilities of the developer are not quite what they should be for you to simply accept their recommendations. And let's see, jumping to the next thing that I can highlight for you. There is a buffer, so you mentioned doing, you know, really getting into the buffer rules for the state. And unfortunately, I've discovered that there really is not a statewide riparian buffer regulation. They're doing them by regions. The one that is under consideration for Yadkin has not been circulated, is not imminent, but there are some out there for, there's one for Goose Creek, which is in fact part of your area. And there are others for Neuse River and Brandelman and places like those. So there's a lot of interest within the DEQ to up those and I would urge you, if the developer's trying to get by with doing buffers that are a part of your town ordinance, city ordinances, or what the county might ask for, that you step that up to a higher grade and go with the most efficacious buffers as possible. So I mentioned a few websites and a brochure that described that buffer and I did not obviously put the URL in the printed copy, so I will email one of those so that you can have access to that material. And the other thing that I would say about the maintenance and the landscaping of that site is that, you know, they talked about in their detailed site plan that the landscaping would be kept, what did they say? Verdant or something. It made me think of green spray paint and it causes me to worry. So it causes me to think, a lot of fertilizers, a lot of pesticides, all of those next to a native area, natural area like City Lake Park and the other tree wooded areas will be very detrimental. So the time to get that is in your arrangement with the developer as they are developing and putting the landscaping in place that will need to be maintained. And with that, I think I've said pretty much what I had to say.
Would you email us your entire presentation when you do that URL?
I sent, well, I do have the copy and I will send the entire presentation.
Okay.
You said that you brought something and dropped it off.
I did drop off the hard copies. I gave it to the person at the door.
Out here?
Uh huh.
Okay, we haven't seen that yet.
Okay.
But if you'll email it to us.
Absolutely, we'll do. Not, not that one, that's to come.
So it's probably still outside.
He's more exciting than I am, I think.
It's probably out there. We'll, we'll get them though. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ryan Sharp, 1135 PD Avenue. Hello, thanks for giving me opportunity to speak. I did send you all my presentation and the outline version and I talked, communicated with Cindy, Cindy Stone about the possibility of projecting it. Do you know, were we able to? Oh, it's on here? Okay. Oh, that's it. Thank you. And then will it just, will it automatically come on the screens or? Does it come on the screens too so the audience can, can see it?
They're trying to work on it.
Okay. And y'all have it on your screens as well?
And we've also got this.
Oh, thanks. And I sent that to y'all on the email as well. Thank you for that Cindy, I appreciate it.
And we do have this.
All right.
I think we're good.
All right, I appreciate you having those, but I'll be honest, I'd rather you not print out PowerPoint slides because it's a lot of ink and it's a lot of paper. So I know you saw my email, I just had to go buy printer cartridges myself and it was 75 bucks. Saved my money, saved my trees, our trees, right? Because they're for everybody. But thanks for getting that up, Garrett, Nima, and Cindy. So those were the two agenda items on the, the public hearing notice that was sent out and I'm hoping to be in favor of the integrity of City Lake Park, however that ends up being with the city or the county. But caveats, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a developer, not an urban planner, don't know much about public utilities other than I pay them and get them, nor am I park manager and accountant. I am a biologist and mostly a bird nerd. I'm the bird nerd referenced by Barbara just a minute ago. So I do have questions that I may ask that show my ignorance on those above-listed fields, but I do know a little bit about biology, but not everything. That's good, because nobody knows everything about anything. There's always more to learn. Keeps life interesting, right? But as a concerned citizen of Albemarle and Stanley County, I do have some questions related to those caveats. One, how soon might the taxes collected from the proposed development be able to sustain and pay for that infrastructure? Because obviously it's gonna need some significant help to reach that little outskirts of town. And then what happens when the city's sanitary sewer capacity is reached? That's a lot of units out there and obviously a lot of flushing toilets and whatnot. So do we really want cluster housing type developments? There are more urban neighborhoods like Concord. Later on, I'll mention from a survey in Stanley County that we want to keep the small-town feel in general in the county. Then of course, how will school capacity be affected? And what a risk of having houses so close, such as fire, but I'm sure that's come up with the fire marshals and, and whatnot. The biological sort of perspectives that I have are, as mentioned by Barbara, what about the stormwater runoff? And I was able to speak with Kevin Richardson earlier today and he went over some of the details of the stormwater management plan. But I am also concerned about potential algal blooms, because like Barbara mentioned, when you get fertilizer coming off of lawns and whatnot, hopefully people aren't using as much fertilizer these days, but you can get algal blooms that lead to fish kills and I'll give you some examples of that. So we definitely need to keep that in mind, especially when it enters the lake and that could cause problems for fishermen and use in general. And then buffer zones as well, as you already mentioned, I too was surprised that we don't have a standard for the entire Yadkin PD basin. Do have that little bit of Goose Creek, but, but not for the rest of it. Then of course, how will birds, fish, and other wildlife be affected? And I wasn't sure if the environmental assessment plan is already being conducted by the DEQ. Are y'all able to confirm whether that's been taken care of by the county? You don't know? Okay. And also, what do the citizens of Stanley County want? So this one, this is a little off to the east from our area, but this is a Neuse River Water Dog. I have it in mind because I just went to a conference where there was a student, Mr. doctoral candidate Tightsworth, who's doing his PhD work at NC State. And they have this in the Neuse River and I don't know what we have downstream in Long Creek or Long Lake, but sediment, there's gonna be more sediment into the creek and the lake. And sediment on top of fish and amphibian eggs hinders them from hatching. I was trying to recruit some fishermen to come talk at this too, maybe we can get them for June 19th, because there's a lot of people who do enjoy fishing there. So I wonder what might the effects be of having that development so close to, to the lake, which is much smaller than Tillery, of course. The fertilizer runoff again can cause algal blooms and this, of course, is a much bigger system, it's the Mississippi River watershed, but every year, there's a dead zone in the Gulf of Mexico because it's draining that whole watershed and you're getting the fertilizer and runoff from agriculture, but also from urban settings. So the, the pinkish dots here are the city centers. And again, you get too much nutrients in there, the algae bloom, then they get decomposed by bacteria which consume oxygen as they're going through cell respiration. And then you get reduced oxygen which ends up killing fish. And this is a picture of a fish kill from Chesapeake Bay, which is another drainage that's much larger, of course, than, than Long Creek and going to the Rocky River. But something like this could happen in Long Lake if we have too many nutrients get in there. So we need to consider that and do whatever we can to avoid it. And the buffer zones, again, I'm glad y'all mentioned it right away, Mr. Mayor. This is an example of what they have for Goose Creek, again, part of the PD Yadkin PD watershed. And they're saying 100 feet on either side. And I put this one because I said it's outside of the 100-year floodplain. I'm not sure where the Long Lake, Long Creek is. It's gonna, it is a floodplain and I know that people who live in that area, whenever we get heavy rains, they have issues with flooding. So we definitely need to make sure that the stormwater capacity that we have there is adequate to carry the water that could be coming up from these. And right now, as it seems now, we don't have buffers that are to this standard, but I imagine that would become with the environmental assessment from the DEQ. Wildlife potential is my favorite thing. I said I am a bird nerd and I'd love more people to come visit Stanley County for that, but I think that's our biggest selling point and it is, according to the surveys that I'll show you here in a second that are in the county plan. This is just a screenshot of the City Lake hotspot and then this can link, I don't know if we're set up here, to the actual spot, but it gives 128 species just at City Lake and just to the people who are reporting an e-bird. So this is the actual link and you can go, and it has the most recent pictures. This person here is the person who took my class last year. And then this was the list that we got on my bird walk on April 29th. We had 49 species, as Barbara mentioned, just in, in two hours and we just went along the edge of the lake. And we've seen Baltimore Orioles on the opposite side of the lake. This guy on the opposite side of the lake, this is not the best picture in the world. I took this last year on a very overcast day, but it was flying overhead and coming out of distance. But if you look close enough, you can see it does have a full white head and a full white tail. And they've been seen roosting over in those trees that are right by the area where the southern part of the development is proposed to, to sit. So the question is, could there be nesting? We know they're nesting along the Yadkin PD near Moro Mountain in the Wewari National Forest. And I imagine that the trees over there are big enough that they could be building in that area. So I also want to invite y'all, everybody here, to the bird walk I'm gonna do at 9:00 AM on June 10th at City Lake. Lisa, I'd originally told you June 3rd, but that didn't work for me. But Lisa Kaiser, I'm on the advisory board for Parks and Rec as well, and she had asked me to do a bird walk for the Year of the Trail, which is what State Parks designated this year. So that's when we're gonna do it there and y'all can get a closer look at what's there. So then the citizens of Stanley County, this is from the 2040 Comprehensive Land Use Plan and this is, I believe, page 58. So it is smaller print, so it says, "How Respondents Feel About Present and Future Stanley County." And the first column is, "What Makes Stanley County Unique or Special?" And all of it is small-town feel, farmland, natural beauty sort of things. So trying to keep that small-town quaint kind of atmosphere, which we all love. I love going here and there's no traffic anywhere. So I came, I lived in big cities, I don't ever want to live in a big city again, too much traffic. Now, it is interesting, then the second column says, "What is the biggest challenge facing Stanley County today?" And they say, "Housing developments." And is that the lack thereof? Or I like to think it's too many cluster developments, but I don't know what that is. I would prefer, and I know it's an ideal, that we do the fill-in where we've got, like I live on PD and PD in Maine and Amherst in that area, there's houses that have kind of been abandoned and it'd be nice if we could restore those and raise the value of my home and those around it, right? But, and then here too, at the end of the, the 20 years, it's got natural resources protected and potential well, well, plant growth, which I think everyone has in mind, we just wanna, wanna do it right. So looking at the City Land Use Plan, as far as general residential, which this development would be, it says, "CompACT residential neighborhoods that set aside significant natural vistas, parkland, landscape features, and other rural heritage features for permanent conservation are encouraged. Development considerations including environmental impacts, urban sprawl," to me, this looks like urban sprawl, but maybe not to everybody, "road connectivity, impact on adjoining neighborhoods, protection of natural features and vistas, and the availability of, again, adequate infrastructure." So City Lake Park, to me, is the star of our city park system, is the biggest one. So I hope you agree that annexing and putting a cluster style development is not really gonna help the park. And elsewhere in the land use plan, it has the parks, recreation, and conservation areas, where it says, "These are areas where parks, recreation areas, greenways, or conservation areas either exist or have been identified as possibilities in the future. Development considerations include desirability of the land for recreation or conservation use, how the property fits..." use, how the property fits in the future recreation plans of the city, and the environment impacts of developing land." And I hope you agree that conserving that land, we get that, ideally, the biggest buffer would be great, but if it does happen, as big a buffer as possible, and try to make it as natural-looking as possible. And like Barbara said, I was happy on the plan that the developer had red maple and had a laurel oak on there as going to be the trees they're going to put in the neighborhood. But the laurel oak is actually further southeast, so I would suggest replacing that one with one that's more in this area. It could, it could do fine in here, because it really only extends up to Moore County. But I think we could have a better choice for that. And then this is kind of a pipe dream of mine. I mentioned this a year or two ago, because at the community college, we'd like to put a trail around it, and there's been talk about the trail for a year even before I got there. But I would love to connect the community college to City Lake Park and maybe make it a part of Carolina Third Trail. I know that's a big project, but I'm just trying to get that out there. And having that kind of expansion and connectivity, I think, offers great recreation and opportunities for the community college to collaborate with the city parks. And in hindsight being 2020, my question is, could this land have been sold as a conservation easement and therefore been protected in perpetuity? And that would be a great legacy for the seller of the land, in my opinion, but I know not everyone agrees. But thanks for your time and attention. And in the presentation, there are links, all those links are hyperlinks, and then also in the outline that I sent y'all, those are hyperlinks, so y'all can go down all the rabbit holes that you want with those as well. Any questions?
Thank you.
Brian, this is, nothing directly about this, but it is about you and what you do. Did you just have a student go to a state conference?
I didn't, in particular.
Did somebody from the science department at Stanley do that?
Oh, Michael Lauder did, yeah. My colleague, yeah. He did, he just got a national teaching award, and that was last year, last fall.
Seems like I remembered.
Yes, he did. Thanks for remembering that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we did have, we had a science festival a while ago, it was in the paper.
That's right.
So that was the most recent one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Gary, Emma, and Cindy for getting the presentation ready.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Carla Wyatt, 35, 737, City Lake Drive. Anyone else care to speak on ordinance 2313? This is a public hearing. You need to speak, please come forward.
We have to close the public hearing.
We're not closing it.
We're going to continue the public hearing until June 19th.
Correct.
Motion by Councilor Aldrich to continue the public hearing to June 19th.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next is ordinance 2309, Long Lake Development Request for Voluntary Annexation. Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak, please come forward. It will, there'll be three of them, but we have to open them and continue.
Motion to continue to the June 19th.
Having motion by Councilmember Aldrich to continue to June 19th.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. The next is ordinance 2310, Consider Zoning for Long Lake Development, zoning map amendment 2304. Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak, please come forward.
And just because they, it will be left open, all three of these will be left open, even if someone does not appear tonight.
They can't come back to the 19th.
For either of the three.
That's correct.
Will it be continued until June 19th?
Do we have to re-advertise or?
No. Motion by Councilmember Hall to continue to June 19th. Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Move on to item D, ordinance to consider request to amend the zoning ordinance to allow bars in the central business district, general highway business district, and shopping center district, text amendment 2301. Again, this is a public hearing, and I'm going to recognize staff to introduce. Ms. Robinson?
Find it real quick. Is this the right one? I don't, yeah. Do we have the agenda up here?
I don't, we didn't have.
Yeah, I don't believe that's the right one.
No, we, we didn't have it right in our packet. We've got it, we have it at our dais, guys.
Where is it?
No, and that's, that was after this, that was not the one that was originally.
Okay. Yeah, pull it up, it's fine, I got it. Okay. Mr. Mayor, back up just a little bit. This is a citizen-initiated text amendment to amend the definition of profit bars and clubs and to allow bars in the central business district. You will see amendments to sections pertaining to general highway business district, shopping center district. Those are changes to the word and the definition. Those are not changes to the allowed use there. I'll go ahead and show that to you in a second. Planning Board did hear the proposed rezoning on May 4th. They voted five to two to recommend approval of version two. There are two versions of this. One is for byright use in the central business district, and the other one is for special use permit required in the special, in the central business district. We have the application and receipts. There's our notice. We do have a, in here, we've included the matrix of other municipalities. We included those that we could find in Stanley County, as well as some others that are similarly sized and/or in our region here. And we looked at the bar definition, what they used to call it, and then what the, we had some notes on that. The majority of these go with a ABC definition for their clubs, bars, profit clubs, et cetera. The majority of them are also allowed downtown. Of those, probably the majority are, do require a special use permit or some other permit I was hoping these would be in red here, but you should be able to see them. This is the first version, this is the actual text amendment of the ordinance. Let me see if we have the other item in the document here. No, okay. All right. I can go without it. First is our definitions. We have changed in both of the versions of this, we changed the definition of profit club to bar. It is more universal in its, in its meaning, in that we've included profit clubs. We've kept private clubs, nightclubs, taverns, lounges, as similar establishments serving alcohol beverage, alcoholic beverages for consumption on premises and providing entertainment for patrons. These shall be determined according to current definitions for private clubs or similarly defined uses by North Carolina ABC. All of that was, language is pretty much already in there. We did specify in this, typically, these should be establishments selling hard liquor and/or fortified wines without requisite percentages of sales being from food service by the establishment, i.e. restaurants serving hard liquor and/or fortified wines or beer, or beer and wine-only establishments. All bars shall be in compliance with local ordinance and state and federal regulations, including but not limited to North Carolina ABC's requirements of permitting. Bars shall be considered a primary use of any establishment meeting the aforementioned definition regardless of other primary uses associated with the establishment. So if you don't have food, if you have to get that, that club, that private, that club definition, club bar definition by ABC, and you have to get that certification, that license for it, then we would consider that a primary use of the establishment, even if there are some other activities going on there. The first version of this, in the central business district, we've simply added it in as a byright use into the list of byright uses there, bars. We'll see some other language here. Most of what you'll see here is taking profit club and changing it to bar. Same here. Same in SCD. We have not changed any of the requirements in GHBD or SCD. We've just changed the wording on that to match. Ninety-two, the second version of this, the version requiring SUPs, we have kept the language the same for definition. We feel that's, regardless, that's, that works. The only difference between this one and the other, the other ordinance, is that in CBD right here, instead of seeing bars added into byright uses, we've gone down here into section C, which are special use, special uses, and they require a special use permit, and we have added that in there as number seven, bars. Same as the other profit clubs, which changed to bars. That's the extent of those changes there. So I know there's a lot of verbiage there, but it's pretty simple overall. It's the definition and, and then deciding whether or not the, in the central business district, if it's a, if it's advisable to change it to allow for byright there or with a special use permit so that council could review those applications when they come
If I'm, if I'm reading it correctly, 1,500-foot rule would still apply, general highway business district and shopping center district, because there's one page missing, is the reason I'm asking about.
Yeah, these are, these are paraphrased, these are the paraphrased changes, which is after talking with the city attorney, this is a better way to do it than changing out the entire chapters at a time. So no, we did not change any of the other criteria. That wasn't requested on the application from the, from the applicants, and so we've left that alone. The only thing that we've changed is since we're changing the definition from profit club to bar, we've gone through and changed that everywhere else. The bulk of the changes are in the actual definition in section eight, 92.08, and then in 92, 100 CBD. And the two options there, really the only difference is in that CBD district, whether it be byright or as a special use permit. Staff would recommend, probably in favor of Planning Board's recommendation on this, that it be, that they be done as a special use permit. We have several establishments right now, we have handful of establishments right now that serve beer and wine, they could add liquor on, they're relatively smaller establishments. But this would allow council, if there is a, you know, a very large club or something like that that's going to open up in downtown, they would have to come in and get an SUP for that as well, and that, you know, that may be some concern with traffic, with late-night activity. That would allow for council to review those, and you could make decisions accordingly.
And council could look at that if they were wanting to put them side by side by side by side, because there is no restriction to that.
We have not placed any criteria in there at this time. Yeah, we've left that open for council.
Yes, special use permit would be, I think, the correct way. Council have any questions for staff? Here in none, we'll hear from the petitioner.
Thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate everything you do for the town. Since y'all voted in the social district, it has brought tons of people down, like the car show.
Can you speak up, sir, please?
The car show that was just in town this weekend, I would say, two-thirds of my sales was taken out into the streets and enjoyed by the people in town. It's the, since the law was changed, you don't need to serve food anymore for alcohol, and I don't intend my place to become a nightclub. I don't intend it to be an eyesore for downtown. I want it to be something profitable for me and the businesses that are around me. Hilltop Seafood has profited greatly from me being next door, and a lot of people bring in food from next door when they're there to enjoy the beverages with their friends. We lose a lot of people from downtown to Locust, to the boathouse, that we need to keep downtown to help it grow, and I just hope you will see it the same way.
Council have any questions?
Does Locust have bars?
They have the brew room. They don't, they, they serve food, but they do serve liquor.
I mean, you said we're losing to Locust.
Well, a lot of people.
Do they have bars?
They, the brew room is a bar.
Of this kind?
Yes.
They don't have food?
They have food.
Further questions, council?
And I, if you look at this, if you look at the spreadsheet, it tells what Locust does have.
Yeah, they're already.
What's it, Locust?
Locust, Stanfield.
Oakboro.
What was the other one?
We did not do a search of what was there, that's only your.
Right, right, right. They allow it downtown.
Allow downtown. What I was looking at was how it was permitted and where it was allowed, if it was allowed downtown.
And the special use, I think that is a great idea, because I think y'all should have oversight over who brings this kind of business downtown, instead of it being overpopulated with it.
Anyone else care to speak? Yes, come on up.
Mayor Council, it's always a pleasure to come to you with an opportunity to further grow our downtown, and for those of you in the room and on Facebook who don't know me, I'm Joy Allman. I'm the Main Street Manager for the City of Albemarle and the Director for Albemarle Downtown Development Corporation. And, and my favorite thing, one of my favorite things of the many things I do with my job is to help our business owners. And so when I do have a downtown business owner that comes to me with an opportunity to grow their business, I feel called to try to assist them if possible. So I think it's great to be able to come to you with this opportunity. You know, I think that we have done a great job and made great strides with becoming a business-friendly city and keeping that reputation. The social district is one piece of that puzzle, and I think continuing to evolve that with the text amendment is a step in the right direction. I think that there are some inconsistencies with the way the percentage of the food sales requirement can play out across the board when we're comparing the full-service restaurants that can sell liquor with the breweries and tap houses that are not allowed to serve liquor under the current city ordinance. The tap rooms and breweries that are currently operating in downtown Albemarle do allow outside food to be brought into their establishments, as Mr. Hicks mentioned earlier. Both Baden Brew's and Yoari Brewing host food trucks at their establishments regularly, and they sell snack foods in their establishments as well. And again, as Mr. Hicks mentioned, Hilltop Seafood, which is located next to Baden Brew's, does serve meals to many patrons of the tap house. They have a great system and a great symbiotic relationship, and I'm always pleased to see our businesses play off of each other, promote each other, and work together, and it's a great system. Hilltop Seafood, you can order at the bar at Hilltop Seafood, they will send you out the door with a pager. You can go next door, enjoy a beverage. When your pager goes off, you can go get your food. Or if you prefer to eat at Hilltop Seafood, you can get your social district beverage that you also want. you can get your social district beverage that you also wonderful in passing with the social district. And you can take the beverage to Hilltop Seafood and then you can enjoy your food there. So it's possible, honestly, it's possible that Baden Brew's may be meeting that food percentage if we were able to track the, instead of brown bagging liquor, people are brown bagging food into the tap rooms. So tracking this, I don't know what exactly, how to get those numbers. But I, you know, firsthand, I've seen a lot of outside food. I've seen McDonald's, I've seen pizzas being brought in. And then of course, there's snack foods that are already there. So, I mean, people are, people are eating and putting food on their stomach when they go in. And if you look at it that way, too, the restaurants that have bars, people can just as easily go into a restaurant with a bar and sit at the bar and drink and not consume food while they're at the bar. So, I mean, if you look at, there, there's another inconsistency to consider as well. And so I think as well, now that we have the social district and it's really working, as, as Mr. Hicks has mentioned, it's working so well for the businesses here in downtown Albemarle. It enables the full service restaurants to send the patrons out the door with to-go social district mixed beverages that contain liquor. And it leaves our tap rooms and breweries that maybe would want to serve liquor at a disadvantage to provide the same beverages under the current ordinance.
Questions for Joy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Mr. Robinson, would you come up again and tell us again what the recommendation was from the planning board?
Planning board's recommendation, I think it was five to two to recommend for approval of the SUP version. I think that's version two of the ordinances, the two copies of the ordinance you have before you tonight. And that would be to add the bar definition, which was previously profit club, to add that into ninety-two, one hundred central business district at the, at the end of the special use permit requirement section. So here you've got the following special uses are permitted when authorized by city council after council holds a public hearing. And then these are all of the different items in CBD and bars would be added on the end of that.
Does that require a consistency or inconsistency?
Technically, it, it should require one.
They passed it with consistency statement?
Yeah, those are always really hard to write because there's not really, it's not really something we mentioned in our future land use map. But I, I think, you know, if you're going to say that it's consistent, then I would say it's, you know, harmonious with our, our downtown and our activity and something like that. Want to go with inconsistent, then.
Kevin, let's, let's, let's get this straight. What you're proposing, what's being proposed is you just go in and sit and drink hard liquor?
What is being proposed? You can do that, you can do that right now at, at a couple of different, few different establishments downtown that are cert, that are restaurants. And they are not classified as bars by ABC, which is what, and what turns out most places are still doing, is they still rely on that food, that food definition there to differentiate between an actual bar and a restaurant that has a bar in it. So if you have the food sales, you meet a requisite number per ABC, which is thirty percent right now, I believe, then you're considered a restaurant. If you don't meet that, then you're considered a bar. So that's why we have a separate definition for bars and that, those bars would be allowed with a special use permit, without having to bring in food sales and stuff like that.
So the issue, the issue lies is that with the percentage, because the ABC license, the percentage of food that is sold in a place.
Yeah, right now you can have a bar, you can have a restaurant with a full bar, beer, wine and liquor, be classified as a restaurant, not a problem. No special use permit or anything, it's allowed downtown. You can have a brewery or a microbrewery. You can have a tasting room where you could have wine or beer at either of those establishments. There's nothing that allows for liquor downtown without having that restaurant classification.
Further question?
And, and the bars, as I understand it, the definition has nothing to do with food. It's only alcohol sales. Isn't that correct?
Uh, no, the, 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 the definition still, it, it still refers to ABC and all that. We changed, we changed from the, the private, the profit club that we had in there, which was confusing and ABC had private club. We've gone with bar, which is more all encompassing. It does still include the, the food requisite. The difference with this is that the definition, definition's changed. The, the food is still there, but the proposal here would that it be allowed in CBD now, whereas it's not currently.
And it's my, and my understanding that planning zoning approved it with this, as a special, as a special.
That was, yes, they, they, they recommended for approval of the second of the two ordinances, which was approval to, to move it into the special use permit requirement.
And that's the, we, we would have last, we would have last vote on everything.
Well, you could vote on either one and either one, but that was their recommendation.
Special use would come to us.
Yeah.
So looking at this, we have three things. We've got the text amendment, twenty-three oh-one. And then ordinance twenty-three eleven. And ordinance twenty-three, excuse me, twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
One, two, twelve. Sorry, my voice is.
No, it's okay. Yeah, I, yeah. Uh, it's twenty-three, twelve, and I, I'm not real familiar with the ordinance.
Twenty-three eleven is the ordinance.
Twenty, yeah, okay, so there's, there's two different options.
Right, and then twenty-three, twelve.
Yep. Similar to how we've done it in the past when there's, you know, potentially a couple of different ways.
We all understood and everybody out there.
Yeah.
There's three things that were.
Well, on this one, there's, there's, there's two things on this one, really. Well, there's, you can go three different routes with it. You could say we don't want any of them, or we want to allow it across the board in CBD, or we want to go with the second version and allow it with a special use permit.
Which would be twenty-three, twelve.
Uh, yeah, that's correct.
Further question? Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone else who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Entertainer motion.
You mean we're going to vote on whether to do this?
Yes. Leader of the motion, what, what council wants to do?
Is that twenty-three, twelve, the one that does a special use permit?
That's the one that we want.
That's the one that, if you want to use special use permit, it'd be twenty-three, twelve as a consistency statement.
And that's what staff.
Move to approve, ordinance twenty-three, twelve.
Motion by Councilmember Wright, approve ordinance twenty-three, twelve, which would be a special use permit with a consistency statement. Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm going to explain, I'm going to vote against this. I, I don't see a bar as being anywhere but a place to go get drunk. I, I can see having alcohol with food and that sort of thing. It's a good thing, but I, 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 I just don't, in my years of experience, I've never seen anything where there was a good place where there was nothing but a bar where you just go to drink. And, and I, I don't like that downtown. I don't like it anywhere in this area. So I will, I'm not for it.
All in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Say about four, three, with Aldridge.
Raise, raise hand. Raise hand.
You're against it, right, right, I mean, all in favors, raise your hand. Three, four? All against? Motion fails three to four. Next is unannounced allegations. Arthur Bailey, ten fifteen Spruce Street. Moving on to number six, administrative reports. How my business center construction progress update?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll go ahead and provide the update. The project on our two hundred and eighty-two business center continues. The work is moving along. The sewer is complete in terms of its installation. It is undergoing testing. At this point, the testing could be complete, but the last update that I received, there were no issues with the testing. The water system was fifty percent installed. Grading is approximately ninety percent complete. And associated with the grading, grading, the string line for the curb and gutter is being set. And our general contractor, NJR, anticipates beginning work on the US High fifty-two portion of the road improvements within a month or so. Also, as part of the project, the city is coordinating electrical infrastructure installation in the park. And the big item right now, in addition to just the infrastructure, the lines and conduits that are going to be installed in the park, which we've reported on previously, they're being installed. The big ticket item right now is the automatic transfer switch is being purchased or the, the purchase order is being processed, and that is significant. What that will do was is that when power is provided from the Leland substation, if there happens to be any issue with power coming from that direction, the automatic transfer switch will in very short order convert power delivery from the Central Avenue electrical substation. So that is a very nice feature of the business center that, and that momentary inconvenience when you have a situation where power goes out unexpectedly, it's a very nice convenience for most businesses. So that's something that we're very excited about. And then finally, the Golden Leaf Foundation grant project, the site ready project, that is moving along and Chambers Engineering has drafted the bid documents and the bid has been advertised with an opening date of June fifteenth. That is the type of bid that we're seeking construction contractors for that work. And if we don't receive three bids at that time, they will not be opened and have to be re-advertised, at which time they can go ahead with whatever number is presented on a rebid, if that indeed is the case. So Mayor, Council, that's the update on the current status of the Albemarle Business Center construction.
Second, the administrative reports or departmental monthly reports are on your agenda. Questions, comments?
Just a couple. In the HR notes, it looks like that the performance of, the performance feedback tool, first check-ins were in October and doing a mid, and you're doing a mid, a mid-year in January and they were just started in October, is that right? So we just started them, the performance is in October and you're doing a mid, a mid-year check-in. And it not, you, that was planned for January, is it?
Initially, our, our schedule has needed to shift a bit, especially in light of our technology event and not having access. So we actually have a conversation with our leadership team tomorrow and we'll be reviewing that schedule as part of that discussion.
Okay, so that, okay, that will be in May. Okay, thank you. I didn't completely understand that. And it looks like we did not get an update from information technology, information systems this month. Lastly, we still have how many on the, the waitlist at public housing? I know we did, we've had to close the pub, that closed the waitlist, but how many are on the waitlist? Three hundred. And is that for section eight or is that for traditional public housing?
Doctor Scott, come on up, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For section eight, we have five hundred and thirty-three individuals on the waiting list and public housing, three hundred.
So section eight, five thirty-three, and public housing, traditional, three hundred?
Three hundred, yes.
And we don't have a waiting list, I mean, you don't have a list open, you're not taking anybody right now.
No, no, we're not.
Because of that.
No.
Just an overall question, okay? Somebody asked this to me the other day, and I know your public, your report, that's your monthly report. Section eight or traditional public housing are supposed to be not, I mean, they're not forever. Is that correct? There's, there's supposed to be a step down or a step up.
Right, the original design was for housing and section eight to be transitional.
There you go. And this may not be fair to ask, but again, I was asked this question. And then when looking through your monthly report, I thought now was the time to do that. What's the average? And you may not be able to tell me, that may not be fair. And if it's not, at some point, I would like to know what an average length of stay is, either in traditional, transitional, or section eight. Okay, I just, and again, don't jump, I, I should have asked you that the other day, but it's just come to my attention this weekend. Somebody said, how long do people usually stay there? So.
Do you mean in, in our public housing community or?
People in the outside world don't care what's going on in other places. They want to know what's going on in Albemarle.
Right, well, I, I've worked in other housing departments. However, in Albemarle, it, it just depends on the individuals. When I, since I've been on board since January of twenty twenty-two, we've had individuals who've stayed for six months and we've had some individuals who've been there for twenty years or more.
Okay, thank you.
Before you sit down, quick question on your budget. Your collective percentage is running significantly behind. What do you anticipate doing between now and next month to correct that?
For our collections?
To correct it.
To correct it. Actually, we're working on that now. We have a plan in place. We're working with finance. There's a number of other instances where we have our ten mass system. Won't be up until then, so we're working with ten mass, trying to make sure that we have everything in order within the next month or so. Hopefully, that's going to be the case.
And if not, what, do you have budget amendments planned or not?
We do, we do, we have several, yes.
So back to ten masses, is that something that was internal that, or is that something?
It, it's internal. I think when Cedric Baldwin was the exec, was the Director of Housing, that was something that he brought on board for that, the ten mass system.
And that is your internal management system?
It is our, it is our, an internal management system for public housing and section eight. But it does run with our PIC system, which is our HUD system. And when they both come together, they both have calculations that we have to put in to determine rent calculations and, and other, other nuances.
And when did that go down?
February sixth, I believe it was.
And we still don't have it up?
No.
So folks that may have had a change in their home life and now have presented themselves in a crisis mode are just out there, is that right? Because you all can't do anything?
No, there's not, nothing we really can do because, I mean, even with, with rent calculations for individuals who are in the program, there's nothing we can do. We can just take in their information as, as we're reserting people, recertifications, but we can't calculate anything because there are so many different stipulations that go into those calculations. It's done by the computer. It's not a manual something that we can just say, okay, here's this, here's that. It's, it's, it's computer driven.
I would just offer to my fellow colleagues at the dais, four months now almost. This is not something that public housing has caused, but we've got folks out there since February sixth, seventh, eighth, or whatever date when it went down, whose lifestyle have changed and who are on the verge of losing a place to stay in section eight, for instance, where they have a voucher because they cannot make the rest of their payment. And then their landlord won't even communicate with folks who are trying to help them. And I, people are coming to me because this, these folks are in crisis, okay? Their lifestyle has dramatically changed for whatever reason. And the general public cannot understand why an, an agency that is of the, of the city, of the state and of the federal government cannot help them and that's what they're meant to help. This is nothing derogatory and there's nothing direct, nothing that I am, you know, directing this to public housing. I am just very, very upset that we've got folks out there that, who need, who need somebody from public housing to be able to look at what they've got and what's caused them to be in crisis.
Right. If I may, if I may, I think that, I beg to differ with you because even before the system went down, there were instances of crises that we could not assist individuals because we didn't have the capacity to have them move in or out into section eight properties. We didn't have, we didn't have enough rental properties either to satisfy their need and in public housing as well. We're still there with public housing because of the number of units that are down. We're waiting for the sewer project to begin, so we can't pull people in, you know, without sewer, sewer. sewer, sewer repairs. So I don't think it was just a matter of the system going down, I think that there is a crisis in housing nationally that everyone's facing, not just in public housing in Albemarle.
Dr. Scott, have any, any of your residents came to you or your staff recently regarding this crisis mode that Mayor Pro Tim Hall is referring to? In regard to that? Have they come to y'all?
Yes, we have, we've had, we've had a few come and talk to us, and of course, we explained to them what, what the predicament was, and yeah.
Dr. Scott, prior to my having to step away for a little bit, I had a couple of the Section 8 folks to tell me that they had not received payment for March, and they weren't sure even about April. What's the status on that?
Right, when our system went down in the city, of course, TENMASS, going back to TENMASS system, we called in all landlords and let them know, according to what we knew, what was happening, and we weren't going to be able to do, to, to make any calculations, to do any changes with, with rent calculations, et cetera. So it, it would be nice if we could just go in and say, hey, we're going to change this number, we're going to do this calculation equation, if we could do it physically, but there are so many nuances or specifics that we have to put into the system, according to recertifications, what the individual may have a job or not, maybe something changed with their SSI, et cetera, those things have to be put in the system. If we don't, if we go ahead and, and guesstimate what will happen, that's going to be a nightmare for the city as far as finance is concerned. If we have an audit, that will be a complete nightmare, because the question will be, why did you change any of this information and not utilize the system to make this happen?
I understand what you're saying, however, was this explained to that level to the Section 8 folks as to why, specifically as to what you were alluding to? Or were they just told, no, we're just going to have to wait? Second part of that is, what about May? Where are we now in this month?
With the same, we're still in this, in the same, absolutely, and, and I wish that, I think this is a trainable moment for all of us, specifically for those that don't know or understand how housing operates. We have a system, that TENMASS system literally runs everything that we do and cohorts with the PIC system. If TENMASS is not there, then the PIC system does not operate so that we can run and do these particular data movements and, and make things, make the necessary changes that we have to. So again, we're, we're crippled because of the fact that we don't have our TENMASS system up. The TENMASS system, again, is our main system, it's independent of HUD to the point that HUD uses PIC, we use PIC with TENMASS, and TENMASS was the system that was purchased well before I, I got here.
And you, the software company TENMASS is in the process of inputting all the data that you're going to need?
Yeah, absolutely, they'll, they'll, hopefully, up to, by June, mid-June, July, they'll have 80% of the data up from PIC, but 20% of the data will have to be placed into the system by myself, Ms., Ms. Bowman and Ms. Hughes.
So I just heard, just for clarification, I heard you say, even before February 6th or 7th, or whatever that date was, that we were not able to do some things, is that?
Yeah, absolutely, we were not able to house individuals because...
Oh, no, 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 I'm not, okay, we're not, we're still talking about people who have the voucher, who have Section 8, that who, for whatever reason, things have changed, either the landlords aren't getting paid, or in crisis situations, they're not getting paid because the particular client lifestyle has changed. So even those kinds of things couldn't have been fixed before February 7th?
As far as paperwork is concerned, yes, but as far as housing them?
Right.
No, we couldn't, we couldn't address their need.
So we don't have any backup anywhere, no paper backup on anything?
We lost a lot of the data.
That was on the computer?
Absolutely.
Yeah, but anything paper?
Paper, we, we have paper, like, for example, when we have to recert individuals, we ask them to bring in certain documents.
Right.
We'd have those, but as, when we bring those documents in, there are tons of calculations that we put into the system. There's nothing that we can do manually to make this happen. If we do something manually, it's going to be guesstimation, and that's going to be a nightmare for us in the long run.
So to counsel, I would say, and, and to Dr. Scott, we keep hearing that it would be up in June, okay? When we, some of us met with HUD last week, I'm wondering if this is the kind of thing that we just go to them and, Chris, you were there, Dexter, you were there, and Ronnie and, and Michael, if we, if we contact them and say, guys, these are the things that we're dealing with right now, what do you suggest that we do? Because we're not the first to have gone through this, I'm sure, with the public housing who's lost what we've lost. But I'm just, you know, we've got folks out there that are, that are screaming, and again, this is not, I'm not directing at you, it's just that we're having to, you know, we're catching it.
Well, it's a two-fold thing.
It is.
Not only the people that need housing, it's the people that have housing.
Right.
And they can't do anything with it. I've got one that just put 20 grand in one, right off of South Fourth Street, and, you know, now I'm sitting out there with an expenditure, I can't get people in, and I'm losing money every month. You know, and it's a shame that it's that way, and understand what we're saying, but I think as we go through this thing, we need to put some fail-safe things in place. When things would occur, we still have alternative routes to travel to take care of the citizens of Albemarle.
Right, that, yes, there could have been, yeah.
Where they need the space to live, and God bless those people that put their time and their money into having Section 8 housing. I don't know what we'd do without it, but I think we're going to experience it here before long. Just my own personal comment on that versus what I'm hearing. Council, have you further questions? We're at the mercy of the TENMASS company, when you stay on them, decide to get it as quickly as we can?
Absolutely, absolutely, we'll work hard with finance to make sure it happens.
Under the consent agenda, I have two items. Number one, A is consider street closure request for professional health care solutions community event, and B is resolution 2306 to establish street assessment rates for physical year 23, 24.
Motion to approve consent agenda, second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend approved consent agenda, second by Councilmember Alders. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to new business, consider major subdivision 2301.
I've got to find it here.
Page 253, I think.
Okay, so this is for major subdivision 23-01, which is a 227 single-family attached, those are townhomes, units on 30 acres on St. Martin Road. If you'll remember, this property was annexed last year. The applicant is Joseph Burlison of Burlison Square LLC, he's recommended, he's requested approval of the subdivision. This is near the intersection of St. Martin and Highway 2, 2427, tax parcels 15, 882, 32779, and 21932. Council's requested to conduct an administrative hearing and consider preliminary approval with major subdivision. Planning Board heard the proposed, I should say, proposed subdivision on May 4th, 2023, and unanimously voted to recommend approval of the subdivision with staff conditions. And I will get those for you. Here's the application, this is the site, probably helpful that wasn't sideways, let me see if I can turn this. As you could see, this is the recently annexed properties at St. Martin and 2427. This is our checklist, everything is ready on this, they're waiting on a traffic summary to DOT. DOT is not requiring a full TIA for this, but they're going to require turn lanes on to, off of 2427 to this property. The only question is whether or not they're going to require a turn lane off of St. Martin Road into this property, but those are both DOT properties, DOT streets, I should say. This is a cluster subdivision, as is done before, here's a little diagram of those. This development consists of lots that are between 2,400 and 11,600 square feet, respectively in size, which will accommodate townhomes. The total acreage for the site is 29.89 acres, and it is zoned R8. Primary axis is between Highway 2427 bypass and St. Martin Road. The cluster subdivision, the, that's a little description there, total open space provided on the plat is 5.74 acres of open space, with over half of it designated for active space uses. Based on the lot table calculations, the minimum requirement for open space is 5.66 acres. Therefore, the developer has met this requirement. Developer has supplied information regarding active open space with a pond, poolhouse, and other amenities, pond, pool, poolhouse, and other amenities. The developer has agreed to present further details of open space site during the civil plan to staff. As mentioned, the site will require a traffic impact summary, and the developer's working with the, with DOT on that. It was preferable that they have that for y'all, but really, it's just going to be a difference of whether or not DOT has that turn lane required on St. Martin or not. The developer proposes to utilize city water, sewer, and electric. Utilities are already available to the site at this time. The road design of this development, we got some, should be shown as 26, and they've met that, kind of going through the summary here. Overall, staff has reviewed the plans and supplied feedback with the developer on this proposal. They've made some major revisions since then. The plan is in conformance with submission requirements, lot size and clustered standards, size of open space, et cetera. Staff believes it's reasonable for the planning board or council to provide objective feedback on this, only, let's see, basically, basically, everything's taken care of except for that one TIA. We did, we did want also to submit the site details of the open space during the civil to staff, those would be the only conditions on this.
Bring back, there you go, stop right, stop right there, man.
Do you want to see the plan or the property?
The property. And I guess my eyes are getting back, because I couldn't even see it on the hand of the printout. So show me.
This is 2427 right here.
Okay.
This, I believe, is the Boy Scouts of America, they're building.
Yes.
The developer was required to acquire, to purchase this property here, so that he would have a second entrance into the site to meet fire standards, as well as city standards, city subdivision standards. Also, we bought this property here as well, there is a, a power line easement running through that, so not much of that is actually developable, but this gives them the, the width of the entrance that was needed there also. The bulk of the development will be in this, this central area here, and...
And the other, go back again, if you don't mind, the other entrance, is that on St.
On St. Martin right here. And if I could show you the larger, yep. They do have a stub out here to the property to the south as well, so that this could be tied together, it's kind of a more complete...
I don't see your cursor, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the south side, the south side right here, yeah. So there's technically three entrances in and out, but right now, until future development occurs, will be the two, one on St. Martin, one on 2427.
And the entrance 2427 is just to the west of the Boy Scout office, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And they've already purchased that property?
They have all three of those properties, they show up in GIS right now, that's correct.
You know, that sort of boggles the mind when you look at that. I'd love to see that property developed, that, that thing looks like a human anthill of some kind. I'd love to see that thing developed, though. Where are those people coming from? Where are they going to? Don't we have around 3,000 housing units approved right now?
Yeah, Councilman Bram, we're, we're getting, we're getting a lot of people from Charlotte and from elsewhere, they're getting priced out of that area, and Albemarle is popping up on everybody's list right now, because we have sewer capacity, water capacity, we don't have any development moratorium, we don't have, we're not too unaffordable, we're not built out yet, that's, that's kind of why we're there. People, people can work in Charlotte still for, you know, two or three days a week, and then work here for, you know, remotely as well, so it, it really opens up a lot more opportunities.
Council, have further questions for staff or the developers sitting here?
I'll just, I'll just add this, you know, I'm all for growth and development, but my only concern as we, as we look at another subdivision is police, fire, education. You know, do we have the infrastructure to take on another opportunity, if you will, like this? That's my only concern.
And I, I'll give my standard answer on that, I mean, a lot of that comes with the development, I mean, and, and we should be meeting with, and we are meeting with the school board and talking with them, and, you know, we should be planning ahead for police and fire. When this was annexed in, though, we did look at it, it is within the, the service area for, for fire right now and everything, it wasn't, it wasn't outside of that, that radius or anything, so in terms of manpower, well, as, you know, as, as residents come in here and start paying property taxes and everything, that's money that's going to go towards that.
So just to follow up to that, and I know we don't have it here, there for a while, anytime anybody was coming in with a major subdivision or anything else, you were giving us the breakdown.
Yep. Well, I don't have that, and all of the formulas that we had on that were lost, unless somebody has a emailed version of the spreadsheet, which I have not been able to find, and it's, it's quite frankly, it's a little bit, if I go back and try to recreate it right now, it could be like apples and oranges, comparing it to the other ones, so we, we have consultants for our land use fiscal analysis study that's going on right now, they've got some information they're going to provide to us, and I'm at the point now where I'm going to just wait and get that information from them, and we can use that as a tool in this, that's what we were shooting for anyway, was to get some information from them, we, a little more detail that we could use as a tool moving forward with these types of projects.
So I would offer to particularly our new council members returning and new ones, I can't remember since you all have been on here, if we approved something in that two months before February, what I was just asking of Kevin, he had a wonderful tool that he came up with, how much, how much the cost was going to be, and what our return on our investment was going to be, and that's what I just ask about, I, I can't remember.
I don't know if they've approved one, I've seen those.
But you've seen them, but he's just started that, probably in the last year.
Yeah, you know, we started about eight, 18 months ago with, when, right after Morgan Hills came in, I believe, we tried to come up with a tool for that, we used that for the majority of the subdivisions, yeah.
Kevin, just to clarify, that information that Mayor Pro Tim Hall is talking about would have been provided at the time of annexation of this property, is that correct? That's one we provided?
It would have been, yeah, yeah, you, you guys, and you guys would have had this at that time when it was annexed, but I, I can't pull it up.
But again, that was at annexation, but this is actually the development where we actually get numbers, numbers of houses and those kinds of things, and I think that is really where, back to, back to Mr. Alder's comment about not just fire and, you know, not just EMS and those types of things, but education, I mean, we really, that's, you know, because now we're looking at ever how many, hundred and how many?
It's 227 units.
227, you know, that may be one child, or it may be two and a half.
So that's why at annexation, it's, I think what Kevin usually does is at maximum potential build out, you know... build out, you know, what is allowable there is at this point, when it's annexed and it's zoned for residential use, somebody has a use by right to develop the property.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, it's, this is basically, this meets, checks all the boxes. So it, you know, should, it should pass and should move through and everything. We could always go back through and revise those numbers with what we know, what we now know. We know specifically how many miles of road and how many residents are going to be there. So it would be good, we could revise those a little bit. It would give us a little bit better information, but yeah. But I mean, kind of the big, the big decisions made when you annex it and you give it the property under the rights to do that to begin with, so.
So get this straight, when you annexed it, whenever you did, you understood this was what it was going to be?
Yes, sir. It was presented as a housing development and council was, as I mentioned, council was giving estimates on the cost of everything.
They requested R8 zoning here specifically because they wanted to do townhomes or a mix of townhome and single family. So when we presented it, we presented that as kind of the high end of the range, which I think is still a little bit over what they've got in here, but they've pretty much maxed out.
Further question?
I do, Your Honor, and this could be from Mr. Robinson or Mr. Burleson here. Is this, is this property, are these properties going to be more townhouse? Is it going to be a mixture of homes, traditional homes and townhouses or what?
These are all proposed as townhouses right now, as attached, single family attached.
Okay.
Further question? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve major subdivision 2301.
Motion by Councilmember Dry to approve subdivision 2301. Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. B, consider asset inventory and assessment award recommendation. Mr. Ferris?
I'm going to call on our Public Utilities Director, Jay Boiles, to speak on this item.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. So late last year, we solicited request for qualifications to engineering firms to conduct an asset inventory and assessment for us. We received a grant from North Ground Department of Environmental Quality in the amount of 350,000 to perform this. Essentially, all this is, is a full asset collection of all of our underground assets for water and wastewater infrastructure. As a part of this, they, they do a condition assessment and they also do an asset management plan for us, basically give us best management practices for evaluating our assets. So we solicited this request for qualifications to approximately seven firms. We also utilize the state's historically underutilized business portal. The city received two submissions for this project, one from LKC Engineering and the other from CDG Incorporated. We hosted a pre-submitting conference for this. Both of those firms were in attendance. We also did a interview process for this and evaluated the submissions based on the criteria that was solicited to them. In both categories for the submission itself, as well as the interview, LKC scored the highest out of the two. So with this project being proposed to be over 50,000 in expenses, it does require councils' consideration on the matter and staff's recommendation is to approve LKC Engineering for this project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Council? I'll entertain a motion.
May of approval?
Motion to approve Councilmember Hall the inventory assessment and award recommendation.
To LKC?
To LKC Engineering. Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to C, consider approval of the proposed utility easement agreement from Stanley Water and Sewer Authority.
We received the, a easement request from Stanley County Utilities. This is right in front of the city's pump station on Vicker Store Road. We operate a pump station, or a sanitary sewer lift station there. It's a very minor easement that crosses the driveway just outside of the right of way. It's non-intrusive. I believe the county is planning on constructing a water line in that area that goes out Vicker Store Road. It's a pretty straightforward easement request. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
And that was my question, you know, we've had, this has been like this forever. Why are they just wanting an easement now? But you just answered it. Because the water line.
I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve. Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Bramlett to approve the easement agreement, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. E, reminder, the City of Albemarle Employee Cookout will be held Wednesday, May the 17th. I encourage you to come out if at all possible. Moving on.
I think it was in the packet that we do have rain. I'm not sure.
It will be at the Waddell Center. Mr. Ferris, I believe we have an add-on here that I didn't get earlier. What do you have here?
Running out copies of an ordinance 2314. As we get to the end of the fiscal year, there's a host of things that City Council has approved and authorized throughout the year and we're moving forward drafting several of those for future meeting. But there is one where, based on how, what the best practice is now from the auditor and what they like to see, we've got a project that's coming to development, which is actually two projects. One is the Street Preservation and Maintenance Program. That project's set to be, council's approved that, was set to begin shortly, so we want to get the budget amendment approved before that work begins. And then secondly, we've got a grant, the council's aware, for the after-school program at the E Waddell Center. Just want to get both of these previously approved projects finalized, the budget ordinance ahead of the host of others that will come later in the year. But again, these are things that council aware of, has approved, and we just would like to have this ordinance approved tonight.
So this takes care of two of them tonight?
That's correct.
What about, how many more do we, have we got that need to be brought with us in the next six weeks by the end of the, end of the fiscal year?
There are.
I mean, it seems like to me we've got some out there floating.
Sure, we've got a couple of stormwater project budgets. Those aren't budget amendments necessarily. Those are project budgets that have to be set up. We've got the Golden Leaf Grant for the Business Center. We've got some ordinances to make all of the ARPA movements before the end of the year.
That's correct. Yeah, right now I've got about another five. They're just, you know, settling out the long shed water studies, just putting those separate special revenue funds so those can be tracked for the grants separately and then the ARPA general entries. It's going to have some policies that we're adopting that we're reviewing with Brett right now and that'll be hopefully come to you by the first meeting in June.
I guess the crazy question I would have is, and I guess I'm sure it takes time, but some of these things we, we've known about. Is it just trying to clean up? Is that, I mean?
Yeah, we try not to, the projects, like you said, we, we know about them, so we try not to come back every meeting with an ordinance. We try to group them together in one end of the year action as much as possible so we're not hitting council regularly with several different ordinances.
I'll entertain a motion on ordinance 2314.
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilmember Whitley to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Coming around the table, Mr. Ferris?
Going back to an item on the agenda, I hope to see everyone at the City Employee Cookout on Wednesday. It's always a great event. It's one of my favorite times of the year. There's plenty of days of hard work and doing what we typically do and it's great to see coworkers who are throughout the city at different locations, stretching all the way up from Jack F. Neal Water Plant to all the way down to the landfill. And those that are job sites may not see these folks that much. Additionally, we do invite retirees and board members and so it's a chance to see people that you don't normally get to see in terms of their association with the city. So I know everyone's schedule won't allow it, but if it does, I'd like to, hopefully you can make it out to the cookout and hopefully we'll have great weather. It looks like the weather forecast is improving the last 24 hours. So hopefully we'll have the event outside because that makes a dramatic difference as well. It's an enjoyable day.
Mr. Towns?
This, maybe at some point, I know we've talked about the number of houses that's been proposed throughout the city over the last year, year and a half. As time permit, whether it's 3,000, 4,000 homes proposed, I would like to have some sort of roundabout figure or percentage of the actual houses that have been built or started construction at this point, you know? Just, just out of curiosity, I've been seeing some, I guess, conversations on social media about, oh, they always approve of something, but nothing ever materialized, you know? So just so that we'll have something to put with those, those stories.
And of those, how many have been, who have, some people have bought or are renting now, you know? I'd like to know that too.
Well, I don't know that we can give those, I don't know we would be able to get those numbers. We'd have to probably look into the tax rate on the properties in order to determine that.
Got you.
In terms of development, if I could jump in real quick. We haven't had a lot of it historically, so maybe a lot of people in Stanley County aren't familiar with it, but it's, it's normal on a major development like that to get approved and then take 18 months to two years to really even start moving dirt because there's a lot of things they got to do on their end. So, and then we've got the slowdown with, you know, other utilities and stuff like that here too, so.
I understand that.
It's going to start coming, yeah. Yeah, and we, we had all the data on the, on the subdivisions kind of pulled together. We lost a lot of that. We do have those rough numbers. Last year we saw 200 plus homes that were constructed and we were on track for 230 this year. I don't know if we fit that already, but I, I think we're, we're going to easily, so.
And while you're there, my last comment, as everybody aware, Starbucks opened up. The parking lot is somewhat unusual. Is that? I've never seen a parking lot where you can't exit, you know, without going through the drive-through unless you, unless they cut through Biscuitville.
It's a, yeah, it's a, it's a, it was a 50-foot wide lot, I guess. I guess that's what they, they did what they could with it, I guess.
Yeah, the drive-through was backed up when I went out there Sunday morning and the drive-through was backed up so far and I couldn't get out. I was stuck there.
Yeah. Yeah, we tried to, we tried to keep the, you know, the, the access between them all open the same way we did with Chick-fil-A and the gas station and, because it, it does help during some of that congestion, but that back area, I'm not sure what to do.
All right. Just wanted to point to that.
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, Saturday downtown, I wish everybody could have been there. Huge crowd. I guess more, more old cars than I've ever seen downtown by far. Groups from California, from Virginia I met up with. Just a great time downtown. Look good, that's all.
Mr. Robinson?
Just a couple of things. One of the things that I want, I'd like for, for staff to work on and maybe we as a council need to consider, I'll go back to the kind of dovetail with what Councilmember Townsend said, you know, I'm, I'm really concerned about our infrastructure. I want to make sure that, you know, if, I know what Mr. Robinson said about, sometimes it takes 18, 24 months, whatever, to get these things going. But if we have an onset of development, I want to make sure that we are, we're looking ahead to make sure we have the infrastructure needed to support these, these developments. Other thing I've got is this week, May the 14th through the 20th is National Police Week. So want to congratulate, I think we had Captain Doug Hicks from the Albemarle Police Department that participated in a ride, a bicycle ride to Washington DC to the police memorial there. So want to encourage all the residents to keep our local, state, and federal law enforcement in your prayers. They've got really tough jobs and we're very thankful for all they do to keep us, keep us safe with it.
Mr. Hall?
Just to follow up to that, are we not having a memorial like we've had in the past? Chief, are we doing, used to, over year after year after year, it's been a combined effort that we have where we recognize the lives that were lost. I hadn't heard anything. I'm just asking. It's something that all the law enforcement agencies in the county have done. I just thought about that.
We've met probably about four times since I've been here quarterly and we have had discussions, but there's no, been no formal planning to, for everyone to get together and do anything. Albemarle is hosting an event at the police headquarters on the 19th, which is Friday. And we sent invitations out.
Just, just to follow up, in the past, thank you, it, it has been done for years and years of the, just recognizing the lives of officers that have died within the county. I just always remember that during the middle of May. Just hold on because I got a couple of different things. I'm just going to start in no particular order. Who and what is the, who is responsible now and what is the update on Courthouse Plaza? Saturday, when I was downtown, whenever I saw Mr. Bramlett, Dr. Bramlett down there and we went back down there, a lot of people were there and all I could say was, I can't wait till this gets done. So where are we in that, Michael? And who is responsible for it now?
There's no change. The contract's been awarded to NJR Group and they plan to begin their construction in August, I believe.
And we've done everything we need to do there money-wise. Is that right? And who is?
Other than, I'm sorry, other than, it's all been approved. I think that is part of the ARPA moves that we'll make toward the end of the year and it will go into a project budget for that.
Toward the end of the fiscal year?
For the end of this fiscal year, but it's, so everything's been approved.
So we're still waiting on that one. And who is our staff person that's got that under his or her belt?
Our assistant, our assistant city manager, Darren Rhodes, is recording the efforts.
Okay. Just FYI, we will not meet again before the first Wampus Cats game. And the first Wampus Cats game is Memorial Day afternoon on May 29th. I hope that as many of us as can be there will be there. Let's see, back last meeting, Robin Louder asked for a litany of things in dealing with the Hemlock Drive. Do we, do we know if those have been given to her, Mr. Ferris?
I think the city attorney has some information about that.
So there are a few things that have been compiled already.
Okay.
I believe one piece of information is outstanding, but she will receive all of that information.
Thank you, Mitch. You're work, we're working on it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. COG meeting last week at a, hold on to that thought. The county COG meeting is Tuesday the 30th in Norwood. I think Clerk, Madam Clerk Stone sent out requests to everybody that, asking if we were going to go. You know, those are good times to get together with folks across the county. The regional COG met last week in Charlotte and I was over there and was reminded of a couple of things. And one of those things is, is that COG has someone that will read over our grants. Okay? And this is something that they will read over every grant that we present to see where it's lacking or what we need to add to. And I think I heard Dr. Scott say that he had somebody that he'd just hired at, I think I heard that last week with Grant, doing some grant writing. And I would just say that if we've got somebody that will look over them, the competitiveness of them, we need to take advantage of that. To that end, there is a grant, and I mentioned this, I think, a meeting or two ago, maybe two meetings ago, there's a grant writing workshop at COG this Thursday on May 18th. And I certainly hope that we'll have some folks that can go to that, particularly if we've got ideas that we're going to have some grants to be written. I know that we are in the time, fellow members of council, where we get phone calls where we see ourselves where grass is up to three feet up. I have made several comments or have, Mr. Ferris sent each of us this link to be able to report those kinds of things. Some of them are being taken care of. Some of them have not had anything done with them. But as I understand, Kevin, someone, our zoning guy sent something out this afternoon saying that they, a couple of folks had not yet mowed or taken care of and they're going to the next stage. So just know that we've got somebody that's trying to stay on top of that. Another question was asked of me and maybe some of you all. Yes, thank you. The burn took place on August 26th at Spate Road and 740, but the debris is still there. And it's my understanding, if anybody asks either of you all, my understanding is, at least this is the answer I got earlier today, they're waiting on now a cost estimate as to how much it's going to cost to do it. Guys, it's, it's down. It's been burned. It just needs to be picked up. I've talked about that. I've talked, several, several weeks ago, I think I mentioned, and Mr. Ferris, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to do this or not, but to see what we can do with Homes of Hope and following up with that group of nonprofit folks coming together, something that we did not take the lead in, but we supported back before COVID. I'm still getting, and I don't know if other folks are or not, that we're getting, we have a lot of homeless folks right now and a lot of folks that go down to the, to the community site for meals. community site for meals, lot of children. So we've got a lot of folks out there, so we need to do whatever we can do as a city, bringing those folks together. After last meeting, I appreciate Cindy sending this out to you all. She sent out to you all, and again, those of you who's not been able to open your email yet, this is a copy of the presentation that Dexter and Chris and I saw at the, at the City Vision Meeting called From Conflict, From Conflict to Conversation. Hands down, one of the best, best workshops I've ever been to, best presentations I've ever seen. One of the things that we saw, in addition to the same issues we are having here or being held, everybody's having them, is that there was a mayor from Scottsdale, Arizona that was quoted, and I loved this, because I've seen folks leave and feel like they were not heard. They've let, they leave city hall and feel like they've not been heard, whether it's a council meeting or anybody else. This particular mayor says, and I quote, "No one should ever leave city hall feeling defeated. There's always something that can be done to help." And when that was part of that presentation, I think when that slide came up, at least at my table, things just sort of hushed. So one of the best things I've ever seen there. At your table today, you have a copy of the debt service schedule that I asked for last week when we came together for the budget meeting, because that budget public hearing will be the next meeting. This is when we'll get some stuff paid for, so I appreciate Cindy taking care of that, getting it out for us. And I'm very happy to know that we are going to have at least two meetings with planning and zoning moving forward, dinner meetings with them, because there are a lot of things. And one of those things, I think Bill Aldridge will go back to what you and Dexter have just alluded to, is our infrastructure and what do we really need to be doing about all these different developments? Thank you very much.
Mr. Whitley?
All I have is to welcome my left-hand compatriot here back with us tonight. Hope he can join us at many more meetings.
It's been enjoyable. You're back, what do you have to share with us?
Well, I'm going to tell you that some of this stuff, you don't know that it's happening when it's happening. And if you're ever in doubt, go to the emergency room. My wife said, nah, you complain too much about being short of breath, this, that, and the other. Ended up at four o'clock over in Concord on a Saturday morning, 16 days later, had a quadruple bypass surgery three weeks ago. All I knew is that something was not right. I couldn't explain it, even at the hospital, they had tests that said, we understand what you're saying, because we don't understand it either, but it, it's, these are things that can be repaired if you get there in time. You're playing with your own life when these things occur and you just overlook it, that I've had two in, in 12 months, and I wouldn't wish it upon anyone. And I just appreciate all the thoughts and prayers from my fellow council members to so many people in this community and around the state that, you know, sent cards, emails, it's just beyond comprehension, but the heart is a wonderful thing. It can give, but it can also take away, and just be aware that one of the things that I've learned is that in the family, it may not be current, but in generations back, it can skip five or six, and then all of a sudden, it's knocking on your door. For those of you that know me, I had never been sick. Up until this time, I've only been in the hospital once, and that's why it's four years old to get my tonsils out. I've never taken prescription drugs until the last 12, the last 12 months, and I'm keeping quite a few pharmaceutical companies in business, and it, it's, it's not a fun thing to go through, and it, it is something that you can control with your diet, with your lifestyle, and those changes you need to make before it's too late. Between the helicopter ride once and this, that, I mean, they actually went in to try to give me stents, and I'm laying there awake while they're going into my arm, up to the upper part of my chest, and then pulling it out and saying, you know, we can't do a thing for you. There's too much damage there. How, and my question was, how has all this happened? And I won't go into all of that, but again, you're in control of your heart and the health of your heart. If you have heart disease in your family, please start having checkups routinely. If you have any type of pain or pressure, regardless of how slight or how painful it may be. Ones called EMS, never, ever, when you have this, get up, walk around, go back to bed and go to sleep, because you probably won't wake up. So if you, you don't have anybody available, EMS is out there, and believe me, they, you might get a bouncy ride, they take good care of you. I, I think I saw a lot of tree trop, treetops that Saturday morning heading over to Concord, and, but I can only tell you from personal experience, and it's not really worth it to you, to your family, not to take the precautions that your body tells you, place your family history to take care of yourself. I hope none of you have to have any of this, it affects in a lot of different ways. I've still got 10 weeks that I can't work. Hopefully in another week I can drive. I've had four weeks that I can't drive, can't do anything except sit on my rear end and run my business from a dining room table. That's not a lot of fun, but.
So this is not work? This is not work?
No, I came, I came tonight simply because I got an obligation to the people who put me here. I feel good. I don't sound worth a darn. I can't, I still can't determine what's going on with my voice, but it's, I'll take this over the other stuff that was out there every day. If you have a question, you're not sure, give me a call, I'd be happy to sit down and chat with you. And there's some great doctors here, 30 minutes away, regardless of which direction you go, that can take good care of you. That, the last thing I'll mention is Rufus Laffer just had three over at Duke, and he came by to see me the first week I was home, scared to death about what he was going to have done. I said, you know, that, that's ironic that I'd come to you to find out somewhere along the line that I had this and had to have that, and, you know, you ought to know about this stuff already. I said, look, don't be afraid of it. One, you're never going to know it's happened. You're going to have a day, maybe a day and a half that you're out of this world. You say stupid things, you don't, you remember some of them, but, you know, is that, you know, how did, how did I get back to Alamo so quick? Well, you ain't ever left Concord, so happy to talk to you, Rufus. And I spent about two hours together, actually talking about this particular type of surgery. And who would have thought years ago that they could split you from here to here, saw your chest bone in place, pull that apart, take your heart out, put it on a heart lung machine, let it be for you while they repaired you, put you back together. I'm, you know, I'm actually glued here, but internally it's, it's all wire. So good thing is I don't fly a whole lot, so if you ever get behind me at airports, you might want to wait a little while. Yeah, because it'll set it off. And just give thanks to the Lord that you have good health, and when it hits, that he sparks your memory a little bit and says, let's check it out. The worst they're going to say is no, and send you home. And that's a great thing. Worst thing is they, they pack you up and send you off. But again, I appreciate everybody's thoughts and prayers. I wouldn't miss this. If I'd been in town, I wouldn't have missed the other two. Ronnie and I chatted numerous times during those couple of weeks, that, you know, I'm sorry, doesn't look like I'm going to make it out of hospital for a while, and I just appreciate the citizens out there who voted and said, you know, we want you to represent us, knowing why I wasn't here. It wasn't because I didn't want to be, and I wouldn't have missed this one for tonight or anything. That's what I was asked to do, and I will see it through to the best of my ability in the short term I have left on this term. And, yeah, I'm going to run again, folks, so if you want to put that on the calendar for 2024, a little bit update there, so, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a great group, and I'll tell you what, being away from is a heartbreaker.
We are thrilled to have you back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
I'm just glad to have my right-hand man back. This is my left hand.
No other comment.
Hold him up.
I'll entertain a motion that we go in a closed session, present the North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 3 and 6, for consult with the city attorney and personnel. Motion by Councilmember Aldridge. Second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Don't move. Coming out of closed session, we met for consult with attorney and personnel, we have nothing to discuss. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn it to our June 5 regular meeting. Don't move. Motion by Councilmember Bramlett. Second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.